This webinar comes at a time when leadership, collegiality, and commitment to civil discourse have never been more important in Vermont. School boards in Vermont and across the nation have been seeing significant disruptions during public comment period as controversial topics present themselves at school board meetings and also in discussions of local education policy and curriculum. Well before the current dynamic began, the VSB A passed a civil discourse resolution back in 2018. And that resolution urged all education stakeholders to, one, teach and model conflict resolution and consensus building as those skills are necessary for the health and well-being of tomorrow's society. And two, engage in civil discourse as we set a course for the future of our schools and communities. So through this resolution, Vermont School Board members recognized that their meetings need to be civil in order to be productive. Over the next hour and a half, our panel of legal, educational, behavioral, and public safety experts will provide you with the tools to help effectively manage public comment periods during school board meetings by balancing the rights to free speech and expression with civil and safe board operations. Before I introduce our panel, I would like to take the time to thank Visbit for their support of this webinar. Visbit is a member organization that works collaboratively with the VSB A and we are very grateful to Visbit for its ongoing partnership. So let's get started. I'm pleased tonight to extend a warm welcome to tonight's panel. Starting with Attorney Pietro Lynn. We also are hoping to have Dr. John Donnelly. I didn't see Dr. John Donnelly when I started, but I'm hoping he has joined. We also have Commissioner Michael Scherling of the Vermont Department of Public Safety, Dr. Zach McLaughlin, the Superintendent of the Springfield School District, and three school board chairs, Elizabeth Burrows, who is also a member of the Vermont House of Representatives, Mary Niles, and Rory Tebow, who is also the Washington County State's Attorney. We've assembled this group of panelists to provide you with practical advice and guidance on how to manage public comment sessions with strategies for how to respond when topics are contentious or members of the public are disruptive. And we're going to begin with Attorney Pietro Lynn, who will be covering the important legal considerations. So I'll hand it over to you, Pietro.
Well, thank you very much, Sue. And let me echo your comments. I'm very grateful both to VSB A and to Visbit for having me here tonight. I'm with what I would characterize-
Pietro, I'm not hearing you.
Oh, well, let me, let me see what I can do about that.
I don't know if everyone's having that problem.
I know I can hear him.
Can you, can you hear me all right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Emily Nysley says she can hear you, so go ahead.
I can also hear him.
All right. Well, so, so let me say it again, just in case. I'm very grateful to both VSB A and Visbit, not only for having me here tonight with what I consider to be a really impressive panel, but also for working with districts throughout the state on trying to resolve what I consider to be one of the most pressing issues that we as schools are facing, and that is disruption during the course of board meetings and really challenging behaviors. Many of you who are board members or administrators didn't get into this business to try and control unruly people at board meetings. In fact, the norm until recently has been that board meetings generally are rather staid and placid events. That has changed in recent times. And as a result, I put together very briefly a presentation which I think addresses the law around public comment and public participation in school board meetings. That is the basis for further discussion that we're going to have afterwards around the challenges we all face. So let me share the screen. Sue, if you could, allow me to share the screen and we can talk a little bit about what the law is. I won't spend a lot of time on it.
You are a co-host now, so you should-
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, so, so as I said before, there, there are increasingly challenges we find at board meetings. And I, as I was getting ready for this presentation, I thought it might be helpful for us to, to use what I consider to be an example of behavior that may or may not be out of the norm. And I want you to watch and listen to this. And what I'd also like to do is use this as a point of discussion when we get done with the conversation about what the legal standards are governing school board meetings.
You should all be fired from your day jobs because if your employers knew that you were more inefficient than the DMV, you would be replaced in a heartbeat. I literally just finished a conference call because I'm having a multitask to be here.
Pietro, can you turn that up a little bit, please?
I can, I can try.
As an excuse for keeping schools closed. You think you're some sort of martyrs because of the decisions you're making when the statistics do not lie that the vast majority of the population is not at risk from the virus. The garbage workers who pick up my freaking trash risk their lives every day, more than anyone in this school system. Figure it out or get off the podium. Because you know what? There are people like me and a line of other people out there who will gladly take your seat and figure it out. It's not a high bar. Raise the freaking bar!
I'm going to give staff an opportunity to make sure that the podium and microphone have been-
Please wipe it down ahead of time, please. There's no way anything is set up.
Peter, your time is finished. Can you please leave the boardroom? Thank you.
I'll be back next time. And then that time, do you open the freaking school?
Can I ask the deputy to please make sure that the gentleman has left the boardroom?
Okay, so, that is, that is something, an example of something I found not in Vermont, but I wonder if it's so different than some of the things that some boards in Vermont have had to deal with. And we'll talk about that behavior at the, at the end of this presentation. But let's talk generally about the open meeting law and what it says about people's right to participate in those meetings by way of something we call public comment. And what we know is that all, so we know that all public meetings are open to the public, right? Any public agency or public board that has a meeting must have it open to the public. We have gone through some contortions or because of COVID to try and make meetings available during a time when direct contact, or that is, public meetings where people are present, were challenging. But, but the law is very clear that we all must be able to attend if we want. The law also says that these meetings are subject to the public accommodation that. And some of us don't think about that, but we have to make our meetings accessible to people who may have disabilities and find it challenging either physically to enter the space or in the alternative to participate in the meeting. And, and when people come who have those disabilities, it is our obligation to provide reasonable accommodation. And when people arrive at these meetings, then they should be given the reasonable opportunity to express opinions on matters considered by the public body during the meeting as long as order is maintained. And you'll see on the slide, I bolded two parts on matters considered, right? There, during the course of the meeting, there will be agenda items that are considered. And the law requires that one time or another during this meeting, people who are at the meeting have an ability to talk to you as a board about those matters. The other bolded point is the one that at least in part is driving this conversation, and that is, order is maintained. And, and of course, the concept of what constitutes order and what is just a vigorous exchange of opposing ideas, it may be very different. And, and so some thought needs to be given to what constitutes order. And we'll talk about what I think that is in a few moments. And, and below, the final bullet point is that public comment shall be subject to reasonable rules established by the chair. That, that's important because as much as we try to collaborate, in the end, the chair has the sole authority to make the rules of the road. Now, those rules of the road have to be reasonable and there are some constraints, both by law and by custom, that may be placed on what those rules are. But generally speaking, the, the board chair has incredible authority to impose some or no rules. I would suggest to you that maintaining order goes hand in hand with this concept of rules. So who gets to say what at a meeting? Under 16 VSA Section 554, the right to speak on any issue is restricted to persons within the district. And I think what that means is that people who are not from your district do not, as a matter of law, have a right to speak at your meetings. So I've never seen it before, but in theory, you as a board could tell people who want to talk at your meetings, who you do not want to talk, who are from outside the district, that they have no such right. People within the district may appear and express views in regard to any matter considered by the board, right? Again, if, if the board has considered it, they get to talk about it if requested to do so and shall give reasons, the board shall give reasons for its actions in writing if it's asked to do so. So let's think about what I've just said. People get to come to your meetings, they get to make comments about things that you've considered, they get to make comments about other things that they want to make during public comment section. They also, if they wish, can make a demand on the board to provide them with a written explanation for why the board may have taken any action. And I often ask myself, how can that be? Boards are made up of five or more people. There may be five or more reasons for why the board may have done any specific thing during the course of a meeting. It is, it is a strange thing for the board to explain why it did what it did, where there may be competing reasons for what it did. I will share with you that I think the best advice I can give is that each person who has a different reason ought to identify what it is if that question is ever posed to the board where under Section 312, I'm sorry, under Section 554, you have to give an explanation in writing. So just some thoughts on what we talked about so far. There are provisions for public comment, right? We just talked about those. People get to talk if they are from within the district. What there is no law supporting is the concept that the public gets to come to a meeting and ask questions and get answers, other than in writing. So this phenomenon that exists in Vermont that in some ways is very comfortable and admirable, that people get to come to meetings, shout at the board questions that are very important to them and emotional in nature, and boards have to respond to those questions on the spot, is simply not reflected in the law. That, that's something that boards do, I think, as a matter of comfort, as out of a desire to serve the public, out of altruistic reasons. But ultimately, there is no requirement that the board do that. Often, it is the best practice for boards to hear people from the public, right? Under Robert's Rules of Order, there, there's no provision that allows a conversation with people in the public. Debate is between members of the board. And so the practice that I suggest to boards is that you listen politely, carefully, to whatever it is that members of the public have to say. But there's no requirement that you respond in any way. You get to nod your head and ask the next person to present. So what does this mean? You can restrict potentially comments to people from within the district. You can restrict public comments with reasonable rules. You have to allow public comment on any item on which you may act, and it's lawful to require that public comment on non-action items be at the end of a meeting. Now, why do I include that? The reason I include that point about putting public comment at the end of the meeting is because public comment at the end of the meeting is the catch-all. That's the moment where people can respond to every single item that was raised at the meeting where no action was taken, right? If somebody, you are discussing the new budget without taking action, the public comment is at the beginning of the meeting, how in the world are they going to be able to respond to the things that happened during the meeting? You have to wait to the end of the meeting to give people that opportunity. Or in the alternative, build into every agenda item an opportunity for the public to speak to the issue that has been considered by the board. That can be cumbersome, that can be time-consuming. And for that reason, unless it's an action item, it is wholly acceptable, maybe desirable, to put those items at the end or put the public comment at the end of the meeting. Okay, so reasonable rules for public comment, right? We've talked about the structure of the meeting. When do people get to talk? Who gets to talk? Who gets to come to your meetings or how do we make sure they get to come to your meetings? But, but the other issue then is, what are, what are the things we can do to restrict or at least to, to moderate the kinds of behaviors that may in the end be disruptive at a public meeting? Well, what we do know is this, we cannot employ a double standard. If we like what people have to say, we can't waive the rules and enforce them strictly for the people we don't like, where the message is not what we like. What we have to do if we are going to create these reasonable rules is enforce them in a way that is spatially neutral. That is, we do not depend on the message in terms of whether we enforce the rules or for that matter, the messenger. The, the public in making their comments may be limited to a reasonable amount of time. And I often get the question from board chairs and from superintendents, well, what is a reasonable amount of time? And I would suggest to you, it is relatively short. It's a, it's an elastic concept. I have been at public meetings where because there are so many people who want to speak, the most people would get was 60 seconds. I have been, and most meetings, what I would suggest to you is somewhere between two and three minutes is more than adequate time for people to express themselves. I, I think it's rare, I mean, not, not everybody is Abraham Lincoln. I, I think it is rare in my experience that people don't repeat themselves where they've gone on for at least two minutes or three minutes on a subject. If they go more than two or three minutes, typically, it's because they want to go back and, and repeat something that they have already said. And that goes to another one of these items, which is you, you can limit repetition. The person who says the same thing six different ways as a board chair, you can declare them out of order and ask them to stop. We can require civility, right? No yelling, no screaming. You can be emotional, you can care about your point, but what you may not do is engage in yelling. And you may not engage in profanity. Those are all items that can be restricted as part of our normal rules. And as I said before, we, we have to make sure we apply these rules in a way that is consistent. All right, here, here is a sample public comment rules, right? Like this is, this is, these are the rules that I, okay. So, so my advice generally to boards is have your rules, establish them. And these are board chairs, remember, this is not by consensus. This is board chair who gets the ultimate authority. I'm not saying that board chairs shouldn't have conversations with others on the school board and even the, the administration to develop rules that work for your district. But in the end, the statutes are super clear. This is a board chair decision. And what the board chair gets to do is decide, are these, because this is the menu of rules. These are the things that you can use, right? Everybody gets three minutes to speak. Nobody gets to speak until recognized. And one of the things that I've noticed that can be incredibly disruptive to the process that, and the meeting is the process, is the concept that people will just spontaneously speak, right? They, they get to talk during the course of some agenda item because they, they have a brilliant idea that must be shared. And, and it's important for people to know in advance that, you know, this is not question time of the British Parliament. There will be a moment during the meeting that is designated for public comments, right? We're going to create that expectation. And then people get to talk during that moment. And, and then the rules here will apply. Comments need to be directed to the chair, right? You don't get to start yelling at someone else in the audience. You don't get to pick out the board member nobody likes and start yelling at them. They are supposed to direct their comments to the board chair. They have to be civil, no profanity or shouting, right? I'm repeating myself, you can shut me down anytime. The board may choose not to respond to any statements or questions raised. Well, I, I told you that, but I think it is important that you tell members of the public that. Because if they think they're going to come and you're going to respond to their questions and you choose not to because they believe subjectively that it's their message you're not responding to because you don't want to talk to them about their really important issue that you disagree with, that's going to create conflict. And again, redundancy is not allowed. Every speaker is expected to identify themselves by announcing their name and place of residence. People, when they have to disclose who they are, tend to be better behaved. The other piece is this, remember, if you want, you can limit comment to people who live in your district. That may or may not be important one day. But the time to spring that rule on people is not when you have the big event. The time to have that rule is that is the rule we always have. We don't trot it out for times when there are a lot of people here who want to talk to us. Okay, so the VSB A model policy, right? As with all things wonderful, VSB A has a policy for that, right? VSB A has a lot of great policies, and this is one of them. So persons who may address the board, right? They've got this public participation policy. And they list who those people are, right? Others, and so we talked about who gets that, and then we can also invite other people if we want. But the invitation, if we are going to restrict comments to people within the district, the invitation to talk must be explicit, right? We, this has to be a very transparent process because we have to educate both ourselves and members of the public what the rules of the road are going to be in advance so they don't feel like there is an ad hoc use of the rules against them based on the message. Okay. So here's more of this VSB A recommended procedures, right? Public comments on the agenda items, like this is really similar to what I said already. Member, so the chair will ask for comments on agenda items before action is taken. Remember, we talked about that before. Whenever action is going to be taken, the public does get an opportunity to speak. Because once the action is taken, that, then their comments don't matter anymore, right? Then you've already done it, it's done and dusted. When the number of people wishing to speak is large, you can use the chair or authorize the chair to use a speakers list, right? We're gonna, we're gonna get a list of people, we're gonna go through that list. People will get their time. The time, because they're many, may be less than it ordinarily would be. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to sign the speakers list indicating which agenda item will be addressed, right? We're just, as VSB A indicates in this policy, what we're really trying to do is we're trying to create order out of disorder. We're trying to create a, a, a organized, methodical approach to letting people talk. And then there's some more here on what, you know, on who gets to talk. And I'm not going to talk about this right now. So what's the problem, right? What is the problem we're facing? Boards aren't cops. And I can't tell you how many clients have called me this fall and late summer. And what they told me is that we have people coming to our meetings and they're very upset about things. They, they refuse to abide by our rules. They engage in loud disruptive behavior. They chase us to our cars after the meeting is over. There is no mechanism for boards to deal with people like that outside of law enforcement. Boards find it difficult to not to engage with members of the public, right? There's this, there's this, there's this concept that if somebody asks you a question during a meeting, as provocative as it may be, right? One of those weird rhetorical questions where there's really no good answer, right? One of those questions that somehow you have to respond, and you don't. And by responding, I would suggest you oftentimes make it worse, not better. Boards believe they can educate members of the public on all issues, right? That's who we are, we are a body about education. We're trying to get people to understand. And if we just give them all the facts, any reasonable person would agree with us. But the reality is on the issues that are animating people this fall, on those issues, education is not, is not a solution. People believe very firmly in their position. They are not willing to trade those positions based on your alternative facts, and you need to understand that. Boards may have divergent views on how to handle disruption. I have encountered that, right? There are, there are a variety of opinions. Some members of the, of the board agree with the very strongly held convictions that are being expressed in a potentially disruptive way. And, and, and that makes it all the more difficult to reach a consensus about how to proceed. It makes it difficult where some board members are supportive of, of the behaviors that are challenging. And then finally, just the open meeting laws, right? This is an incredibly difficult challenge because the open meeting law tells you that, listen, everybody gets a chance to come to the meeting. Everybody gets a chance to speak. And, and if that is the case, then it is really difficult to have a meeting where people in advance make it very clear they intend to disrupt. Now, there's some solutions we can talk about to people who say, we will come and disrupt. But, but, but what you need to understand is that the, the starting point of this analysis is what we've talked about already, which is an open meeting law that invites all comers. Here's some language from VSB A, I'm not going to read it. This is the pre-public comment period suggested language for board chairs. Sue Saglowski wrote it, it is fantastic. I will, I will send this to everybody if they want it. And then there's some language that Sue wrote for extreme emergency and for less extreme emergency. Again, a very, very helpful where you're in a situation where the disruption is so great that there's nothing more you can do except to adjourn the meeting. So those were the items that I wanted to share with you. Back, back to the group conversation. And if you have questions during the course of this, please, please do ask them. Sue, back to you.
Thank you so much, Pietro. And I'm sorry for interrupting you earlier. I, that was a technical issue on my end. So thank you very much for providing us with that legal foundation. And we're now going to move into the panel discussion portion of the webinar. And attendees, please feel free to post your questions in the question box, and I will pose them to the panel. But in the meantime, I have several questions to get us started. And I would like to start by asking the three school board chairs on the panel if they could share any board meeting management challenges that they have faced and how they coped with them. And I'd like to start with Mary Niles.
Hi, thank you, Sue. Appreciate being here. And I, I'll just let the folks in our audience know I'm Chair of the Northern Mountain Valley School District as well as Chair of the Franklin Northeast Supervisor Union Board. So I chair both of those boards. And, you know, we've certainly dealt with some pretty extreme situations at our SU level boards, less so at our district board. But the clip that Pietro showed in his presentation, I would say, was slightly reminiscent of probably our most challenging board meeting to date. And that, since that meeting, we've not been able to meet in person and we have resumed virtual meetings. We are staffing an in-person location in order to meet the mandate of the open meeting law. But so we've certainly had a lot of challenges this fall. Most, most of them are born from kind of disagreements within the community around COVID. around COVID-related issues, specifically masking requirements, both in our buildings and, uh, during the school day, as well as, uh, our local boards and the S U board have passed mask mandates for our meeting attendees and participants. And that's been a real flashpoint issue. And it's, it's, it's been challenging to kind of see these culture wars kind of infiltrate in, into our kind of local politics here. And how do we kind of maintain, um, civility and the decorum needed to have productive board meetings? Um, and so I, uh, I think as chair, you know, my, my main strategy has, is always to be gracious and kind to all participants, whether I'm in agreement with them or not. And so I try to start from that place. Um, but it isn't always easy when you're faced with people screaming at you. And so how do you thread that needle between being kind of empathetic and kind, but also being kind of firm in setting the boundaries around what is appropriate and what isn't appropriate in the context of these, of these meetings? Um, and, you know, I know Pietro, you mentioned a little bit about public comment at the end of the meeting. We have always held our public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And we also don't have public comment that's kind of woven into kind of the sections where we might be having an action item. That hasn't been historically how our meetings flow. But I'm, uh, so now you have me thinking a little as to whether I, I need to, uh, maybe circle back to that with you at some point. But in any event, our public, to date, our public comment tends to be at the beginning of the meeting. And I think some of that is born of a respect for the people who come that may not want to stay for the remainder of a three-hour-long meeting because sometimes they are that long. And, uh, they can come, they can have their time to comment. And then we can, uh, they can leave the meeting if needed and they don't have to kind of, uh, go through all the, uh, process with us that remains for the rest of the meeting. Um, but, uh, again, you know, we're currently virtual and I, for our meetings. And, um, I am not exactly sure where we go from here as far as what is it going to look like to try to resume our in-person meetings? If, as long as we maintain our masking policy, because that seems to be, um, the biggest, uh, trigger for people that's inciting a lot of that, the kind of discord in the meetings and making it impossible if we want to not set a precedent that we just back down and don't adhere to our policies. But then we cannot move forward with the meeting if people are refusing to don a mask. And so it's a really challenging situation for us currently. It's moot in the moment while we're, uh, in the virtual realm. But we, we hope, I hope that we can resume our in-person meetings and find a way to work with the people in our community, um, around this particular masking issue. Um, but I'm, I'm, don't know yet. We don't have a firm decision as to when we will, uh, resume our in-person meetings. Um, and I, I guess I would just add that we are heading into also other, other kind of challenging, uh, cultural issues around vaccination, around some of our diversity, uh, equity and inclusion work. And these are also issues that seem to really polarize people in the community. And so even once the masking is perhaps no longer the issue du jour, um, I think the lessons that we need to kind of take moving forward are how do we continue to have successful, functional meetings in person when there are issues that are inherently polarizing within the community? And so, you know, so I think deeply about this as chair because I want people to feel as though I hear them. Um, I always try to really communicate that piece around that it is a meeting that is public, but it is not a meeting of the public. And that is that tricky piece with public comment because we aren't there to engage in a debate. It isn't like town meeting day. And, and I'm, I'm, I love a good town meeting day. Here in Montgomery, it's one of the highlights of the year. I'm all for it. I love a good debate. And, um, I love the differing of opinions and where we ultimately land on, on big decisions that are important in our community, where I live in Montgomery. But it's a totally different forum at, at the school board level. And so, and I think that is one of the challenges with, with people who come and they, they feel as though because we aren't engaging in a debate, because we aren't, um, kind of, um, answering their questions during public comment, it's merely their time to comment, that we aren't listening to them. And so, um, you know, I'm, I'm really sensitive to that. And I, I listen really deeply and thoughtfully to every person that comes to public comment. And I, I, I hope I communicate that in, during the meetings and let them know they're heard. That doesn't necessarily, uh, mean I agree with them and it doesn't necessarily mean that it sways the board's, uh, decision on any number of issues ultimately. But that they are heard and they have that ability to come and speak their, speak their truth. So, um, that's another thing I, I feel is really important as my role, you know, for my role as chair. Um, and moving forward as we, um, when we do resume our meetings and we continue to kind of forge forward with some of these other, um, topics that some in the community may find controversial, I hope that, you know, we'll find a way to kind of have civil, functional meetings um, and not have, um, to have law enforcement there, which we have had, um, uh, in our, at some of our meetings and not have to adjourn meetings because, uh, everything kind of breaks down and we cannot, um, no one will follow our policies and we have to adjourn the meeting. I mean, these are some of those pieces that are really challenging and are, um, hindering, uh, the good work that the board is trying to do.
Thank you, Mary. Elizabeth, do you have anything to add to what Mary said?
Well, uh, I've noticed about myself that, um, if I am anguishing over the issue myself, that's being, um, that's being discussed or yelled about, then I have to, uh, I, I wind up having a tremendous amount of anxiety. And that's really, uh, hard for, hard for anybody to, to manage and, uh, not feel attacked personally. But the, um, the issues where I don't, where I've made up my mind about it, it's very easy for me to divorce myself from it and not take, not take, uh, yelling personally. I do find that, uh, all of the comments are really important. I know that people get emotional and heated up about it. Um, and sometimes, uh, you know, sometimes you have to, uh, wade through the manner to get to the message. And, uh, the message can come in all different, all different forms. Um, and sometimes you have to do your own interpretation of the message. But, uh, it's all, it's all really important. Um, I say that having never experienced, uh, a school board meeting like the one that Pietro, uh, privy us to. But, um, uh, so I think it's important to try to, you know, do whatever. I, I have a pair of earrings which I'm not wearing right now, but they're earrings that a friend gave me who lives in Ghana. And they are a symbol for, um, unity in a time of conflict. And so I put those on before a, a meeting that I know is going to be difficult. And it's like my, you know, little, little meditation reminder, especially if I'm online, I can see the unity in the time of conflict. Um, and, uh, I try to, you know, talk, talk to the board before that meeting. Um, if it feels like there's going to be, uh, you know, talk to each board member separately, um, to try to, you know, get in the same headspace. And, uh, I will say that, um, through preparing for this panel, I, I realize the degree to which, uh, I've used an uneven hand and I've allowed, um, uh, the seating of time, which I think is really wrong. And, uh, and I have applied rules, as Pietro said, I've applied, I have, I'm guilty of applying rules where there's a huge crowd and not when, you know, there's only a couple of people and that's also not right. And it's an easy fix, um, that can start now. Uh, um, an easy lesson. Um, and yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Elizabeth. Rory, any, um, words from you before we go on to the next question?
Good evening, thank you for having me. And, uh, I think I'm fortunate that I have not been a school board chair very long. I've been on a board for four years. And, um, our experience in Cabot and within the Caldony Central Supervisor Union has not been nearly as bad as a lot of our other districts around the state in terms of dealing with people who are unhappy. Those who have been discontent or, um, especially opinionated at meetings have been hurt. Fortunately, a few and far between, and, uh, that's not really disrupted things. But that said, we're no stranger to contentious hearings, um, including, uh, surviving the Act forty-six process where there was no shortage of very strong opinions. And I agree with what everyone else has said that, you know, we're, many of us hail from these very small communities where we tend to know everybody or at least tend to know the people who are in the, you know, circuit of public speaking or who are willing to come to meetings. It can be very difficult to try to rein in, um, comments or discussion that begins to become unproductive or, um, you know, in extreme, in extreme circumstances go off the rails. And I think it takes a real, it puts a lot of people in, in discomfort. Even though, you know, in my day job, I'm a state's attorney dealing with, you know, judges and, um, sometimes very scary defendants on the other side. Uh, the school board setting is much more intimidating because these are friends and neighbors. And it can be difficult to assert that authority in a way that is, um, respectful, um, but firm. So I really appreciated the, the walkthrough that Pietro gave about, um, how to approach meetings in the future. And I'll, I'll say this, I think the times unfortunately are changing and we rely on a lot of, um, notions of collegiality and a, a shared community sentiment. It's why public meetings and town meeting days worked for so long. Uh, but in the current moment, and, um, the degree of tension driven by the pandemic and, and political divide seem to be really hitting hard at these traditional notions. And, um, I'm walking away tonight with the reflection at both that, um, our district board and at the supervisor union board, I think we need to really revisit being more formal, uh, and setting some, you know, ground rules. Um, not because we want to, but because, um, I think it's important, as Pietro said, for consistency and to make sure that when we are tested or we do find ourselves with, um, people who don't want to, um, yield time or, or don't want to be respectful, that we have something to rely upon to respond. So again, thank you for, uh, inviting me tonight. And this has been fantastic so far.
Thank you very much. I'd like to shift our focus now to, um, think about, uh, maybe before a disruption occurs and ask Dr. John Donnelly, are there any signs that board members can look for that would indicate that, um, you know, a disrupt, disruption is about to occur? That a person may be dysregulated or dangerous?
Hey, John, you're muted.
Uh, certainly the, um, clip that Pietro showed us with the man, he came in very angry and he stayed angry. And, um, I thought that was somewhat instructive. Um, because as Rory said, many of you as chairs know these people. These are your, your neighbors, your community members. And so occasionally, one of your community members may start out doing well and go off the rail for a bit and may not pull it together, but it may be somewhat uncharacteristic. And that's something we can learn from. And with an individual like that, if you know them, you may be able to have some type of follow-up with them. Gosh, you, uh, that was a really emotional topic. And just see where they're at to check in. Uh, on this other individual we just saw earlier though, that person started and kept a very high intensity. Someone like that, you would predict or you would think that they're more committed to their position and also committed to their anger. And, and those are the type of individuals that may go a little bit further, um, with emailing and texting and other communications. So in terms of recognition, it's a tough question, but I'm, I'm answering it a little broadly. And I'm trying to get at more affective aggression and when it can cross over into predatory aggression. The individual we saw before was act affectively at a high level of aggression. He didn't start out low, he came in high, he stayed there and he left saying he's going to come back. Individuals like that, those are probably people you want to share some information with law enforcement, depending on the legalities of that. Because those are the type of individuals that are more apt to engage in predatory aggression, fire off emails. That may be the individual who's going to wait for you by your vehicle, okay? Most people are not going to be at that level. Um, in terms of signs, I think some of the other things, um, I think we need to do if, if this landscape continues to shift and things stay at this level of distress, is really talk about security measures, which I think Mike will be better at answering. But, you know, it may not be a bad idea for some boards to start thinking about sort of, uh, sort of a, just an in-house, uh, uh, safety team of a few people. Should they pull some people in? And should we start thinking a little bit more about security? For example, making sure that we announce in advance, uh, to the local law enforcement persons, the location, the time of our meeting. Um, and another thought I had was, I, I love the idea about being more formal. And, uh, this really gets at setting expectations, which, um, attorney Lynn did a very nice job and he had the seven bullet points. And I think we can even add some. Should we even have members, when they come to these meetings, sign in as well? And after they sign in, should we hand them the one pager of expectations? And then should the chair take twenty seconds before the, um, board meeting begins, similar akin to a high school athletic event, where the umpire or the referee or the athletic director may read a short little paragraph about what's expected about tonight's event? That, um, we expect, uh, competition, diverse opinions, um, people express themselves. Uh, we expect civility, um, being respectful, et cetera. So, um, I certainly think that, uh, it's a combination of not just recognizing someone who's going off the rails, but a couple of other things. Setting expectations and going a little bit further with that. But then also thinking along the concept of, uh, consideration of security members, of security measures. What room are we having the meeting in? Is this a good room, is it well-lit? Do people have enough space between them? Is it a safe space? Um, some of it may sound a little bit absurd, but it, it, it's really good to have a game plan and to really be on the same page. And then even do some, some, you know, what ifs, you know, how, with this particular gentleman. It may be a good idea for a board to play that out. So how would we handle that? Is that someone we should report to the police? What's our protocol? Was that, what was it that extreme? Um, so those are the type of dialogues. So when I think about looking at someone who may be, uh, uh, dangerous, I'd like to sort of back up. And I think we can manage that by setting expectations, talking about security measures, and then looking at people that are just going off the rails a little bit. And generally, they're, it's someone more uncharacteristic versus someone who came in, like we saw earlier, who came in at a very elevated state. And those are the people that we probably may want to communicate with law enforcement about.
Thank you. Is there anything, um, that you would recommend that board chairs do if, uh, sort of none of that, none of those things work and they do have a situation where, um, uh, someone from the public is speaking and their conduct seemed to, seems to be escalating? Is there anything, um, they can, that a board chair could say to kind of help de-escalate the situation?
Uh, the gentleman we just saw, probably not, because he would not hear it. He was of such a heightened state of arousal that, that, um, he seemed to be on a mission and pretty committed to his anger. Uh, but I think most people, we can do that, Sue, and, and we can call them by their first name. Sue, you have thirty seconds left. Um, remember the, uh, the guidelines about tonight and the protocols. Um, please finish your statement so the next person can speak. Something as simple as that, address it by name, tell them how much time they have left and that there's another speaker after them. Um, I think you can do that with a lot of people. Uh, I think the person we saw earlier in, in the, uh, video was so dysregulated, people were just sort of aghast and they didn't know what to do. and they didn't know what to do and they were just waiting for him to leave.
Thank you. The next question I have is for Commissioner Shurling and guess Rory Tebow with his state's attorney hat on. If a board chair learns in advance of a meeting that individuals plan to be disruptive, who should they contact in law enforcement and what type of follow up should they expect?
Good evening. As with many questions, the answer begins with, it depends. The, it depends who is covering your area. Two hundred plus towns in Vermont have state police coverage as their primary response. And then there are fifty plus that have their own, either a law enforcement agency or sheriff's department. So whomever's got the primary responsibility for your service area would be the point of contact. And then there, there are a variety of things to contemplate in the advanced planning. And Dr. Donnelly actually hit on a few of them, considering the space that you're meeting in, is there is it well lit? Does it have the ability to videotape the entire meeting to ensure you're memorializing what's happening, both for, you know, minutes and and for future public consumption, but also to document anything that might need to be reviewed again in the future. Is there a good safety plan for the board? Is there a room to exit to if things do, if you need to adjourn and things do look like they're getting overly heated? Is there a safe place to go? You know, many of the things have been covered, making a plan to set expectations ahead of time. I actually also wrote down, have a have a quick handout as people are signing up to speak at public forum. And then reiterate those rules either with postings or having the chair open the meeting with the rules, especially if you're facing a large crowd, but certainly doing that. As a matter of course, as Pietro suggested, is makes it so it doesn't look like there is a special response to a particular issue, which is I think important for a host of reasons. You know, it may mean that you're asking for a law enforcement presence, at which point now the, the question becomes, what's the right one for a particular meeting? That could be a uniform presence that's, that's posted so people know that they're there as they're coming in. But it might also be a plainclothes presence, because sometimes the presence of law enforcement actually tends to heighten the emotions at a particular event. So you know, I, I think that's something that you have to sort of take on a case by case basis, but that's always, always an option. How you handle the confrontation, planning for that, again, a number of the things have been, have been talked about, staying calm and steady. Being respectful and sort of mirroring the demeanor and behavior you want from those participating is important. So beginning to raise your voice is just going to make them try to, in many cases, try to raise their voice over yours. So bringing it down and, and using that that mirroring aspect of human communication to try to bring them down, that's not always going to work. But it's a tactic that will work with some folks. Important to note that very few folks that are coming and screaming at these meetings actually pose a physical risk. They are frustrated and they want to have an outlet and they're inappropriately choosing that outlet and a, and a means to express themselves. Like in the clip that you saw, but they may have an important message that's buried in that emotion and and the inappropriate way of delivering the message. So again, there, it's, it's unusual that you would have someone that actually poses a physical risk, but it is not outside the realm of possibility. And of course, this is playing out not only in, in school board meetings, but on airplanes and with election officials and health officials and sort of you name it relative to COVID. And then it's happening on a host of other topics around the country as well. The other things to consider, you know, relative to sort of crafting a response together with the law enforcement organization is to the extent possible, you want to try to avoid confrontations from happening at the time. So unless there's a need to intercede because there is a risk to someone, that's certainly something you want to have handled at the time. But trying to take somebody aside to give them citation, for example, for, for trespassing, for disorderly conduct, if things do cross the line. It may not be the right time to do that in the mid, middle of a meeting. As has been observed, it's quite common to know exactly who folks are. That can be done after the fact. In certain circumstances, the board may actually be able to use a tool called a letter of trespass and prevent folks from coming physically to a meeting for a period of time. That is, it's a complex landscape, because I think that bar is going to be quite high relative to a a, a public meeting, but it is, it is conceivable if there's a way to allow them to weigh in with their thoughts on whatever's being deliberated under certain circumstances. And ultimately, that'll be something that potentially a judge will have to assess. But also in the wake of a citation, again, you know, we'd want to try to avoid people going to court for being disruptive in a public meeting. But if they cross a line and they make an overt threat or they completely destroy a board's ability to, to function and work for the people. You know, going to court may be something that is a last resort. And then you have the option of, if that, if it goes that way, there's the option of pre-trial conditions of release that might prevent them from further disrupting those meetings. And I imagine Rory can talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And then finally, they're, you know, taking a break to settle things down. In a worst case scenario, adjourning has been mentioned. Virtual meetings are actually a benefit at the moment, despite the fact that they're, they're, they may be causing some of the consternation. There, they certainly create an added air of, of safety. And, and again, it's really just about sort of coordinating and scripting what the response is, a bunch of if then statements. If the following happens, then this is going to be our game plan and having everyone present know what that is ahead of time. So folks don't freeze, they don't get overly anxious in the face of, of something disruptive or unusual happening. That's the most important thing is to have a plan.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Rory, would you please follow up on some of the things that Commissioner Shurling mentioned? I'm wondering specifically about criminal statutes that would provide the basis to charge someone who's disrupting a public meeting?
Sure. So to start off, Vermont's disorderly conduct statute has a specific carve out dealing with individuals who disrupt a lawful public assembly. So a school board meeting or select board meeting for that matter would readily qualify that as something warned and it's, you know, deliberate to public business. From there, in order to sustain a criminal charge, there has to be what's called a inconvenience or annoyance, which is defined in really loose terms. Is it harasses, bothers, irritates or disturbs another person? And I'll get to why that is maybe a little bit tougher than meets the eye. The next is that there, that it's done with, that the person's conduct actually impairs and disturbs the lawful assembly under the circumstances. So it needs to be some sort of substantial disruption that could maybe be under the circumstances of being forced to adjourn or having to cancel a meeting. The wrinkle, of course, is this, and for those of you paying attention in the news, what school boards are seeing now is akin to what a lot of election workers around the country dealt with last November. And our secretary of state's office has continued with the residual effect of, you know, threatening or harassing comments being made. The collision course that all of these statutes have is with the First Amendment. And protected speech is important and Vermont statutes, as Pietro walked us through, provide with some limitation, the ability for people to talk and just being out of order at a school board meeting wouldn't unto itself, open the door or some sort of criminal liability. But as things get more extreme or there's disruption or people feel they actually have to flee or their physical security is at risk, that becomes an issue. One of the questions I saw in the comment box is, is a constable a good alternative to come? And I will say from Cabot's experience, yes, our constable is somebody who's very well respected in the community and has come to prior school board meetings or particularly to school events when there's a concern of contention, sometimes for sports games, for example, among other things in the past, but that tends to have, it can have a calming effect. And I agree with Commissioner Shurling's assessment, but sometimes having a uniformed sheriff or trooper there can lead to an escalation of sentiments rather than de-escalation. So to that end, I am aware of some circumstances where meetings someone in plainclothes and law enforcement has been requested instead. I also agree with everything he said about planning at the local level. And, you know, I, I hate to put it this way, as board members, I don't think we often think that we have to do some of the things that our students are now forced to do in schools, unfortunately, but thinking through almost akin to an active shooter drill of where do you go to seek safe haven if something you know, bad happens? And are there particular board members who are being targeted? Is there a particular member of the administration who's being targeted? So that, that comes into play. I think also I'd, you know, recommend this is more for administrators and for school board members. You know, in the wake of what happened in Fairhaven several years ago, there was a huge emphasis on school security once again. And as part of that, I know the Vermont State Police made a lot of effort to reach out, particularly to the rural school districts to familiarize themselves with the layout of campuses and to meet, you know, keep people there. I think also school board, you know, schools generally have updated emergency procedures. And it may be worth going forward, including meetings or public gatherings as part of that planning to really, you know, contemplate just keeping everyone safe outside of, of school hours when we traditionally think that there's, you know, full teaching staff, you know, employees, and then of course students on campus, because when we're using or co-occupying that space, some of the same risks unfortunately can be present. I think in our prep session, we talked about this, it is really unprecedented that we have to have this conversation given just, you know, three or four years ago, this would not likely have been something many Vermonters would be concerned about.
Thank you. I have a bunch more questions, but there, there are some from the audience as well. So I'm going to delve into those a little bit. There's one here that says, what if the supervisory union has a requirement for everyone to be masked in a district school when a large group of people without masks force their way in to the meeting? I'm presuming it doesn't say to the meeting, but is there anyone who can answer that one on our panel?
Well, so Sue, I, you know, I, I've had this very same question raised by clients and I mean, this is not hypothetical. People show up at, at supervisory union or school district board meetings where the board has in advance voted as a protocol that they will require masks for themselves and for members of the public. And it is seen as a mechanism of, you know, protest to be able to show up without your masks on. They, I, I think the argument can be made that, that these people are unwelcome if they will not wear their masks. And then we wander into the realm of criminal trespass and whether we issue a notice against trespass against them. And if they violate that, what does law enforcement do? And I'll defer to Rory and Mike, because that's their bailiwick, not mine. But what I would say is it's really important if we do pass rules like that that require people to wear masks, that we understand that these are still public meetings and we have to find ways for people to attend if they are not allowed in, if they're not wearing masks. So for example, we need to think about alternative forum, fora, where they can participate remotely by telephone from a different room in the building. You know, we need to use our imagination to find ways for them to effectively exercise their same rights, but in a different location where they are not a danger to others by virtue of their refusal to wear masks. Now, I, I, I think we also, I, I talked to you during the course of my presentation about the Public Accommodations Act and the Public Accommodations Act would, would require us to do the very same thing. Not just to people who as a matter of politics don't want to wear masks, but people who because they are severely asthmatic or some other medical or mental health condition cannot wear masks. And, and we have to, we have to extend them some way to effectively attend and participate in the meeting if they can't attend abiding by our rules.
I think I have another one for you, Pietro. Thank you for, for that one. This one says, can you restrict public comment from an individual if they have previously addressed the topic? Example, the resident who wants to rant about masks every time the board meets.
Yeah, I saw that. That's from my friend Mark Tucker. So, so let me let, let me say this. I, I, my, my caution that we can restrict public comment for redundancy is within the context of the meeting. If you have somebody who's committed, who wants to come to every meeting and spend two minutes or three minutes talking about their issue, I would be reluctant to restrict that speech, right? We let all comers join, join the meeting, speak to their issue during those, during the public comment period. They're restricted by the chair's reasonable rules. But, but if, but if there are broken record from meeting to meeting, my advice is if we're worried about complying with the open meeting laws, if we're worried about free speech rights, let them do, let them rant.
Okay, here's another one. When do the public's questions get answered? And I think this is, you know, referring to what we've said earlier about that public comment period is not a time for a discussion. So how do, how do people get their questions answered? Maybe I'll ask Zach McLaughlin to start off with that one.
Well, I, I think, I think one of the core things, circle back to that specific thing. I think people have done a really good job talking about the need to be consistent. And I think we, in Vermont, what I've seen, so now I'm in my ninth year and with my fourth chair, and I've seen chairs on a, on a spectrum. Try to deal with, we'll call it the family store trap. And, and the like, and you, and I think, you know, Patriot did a great job talking about this. You, you want to, you need to be, you need to be consistent, you need to be disciplined. And you have the rules in place for the bad nights, but you got to use them every night. And, and if you don't, then people get elevated because, because they think you're selectively imposing the rules on them because you don't like what they have to say. And you know what? They're right. That is, they're right. That is what you are doing. So if you're not being consistent, they're going to get, they're going to get elevated. And I think what is important in, in thinking about just laying out the rules is also you have to have a certain fluidity around understanding your own procedural whys. Why are we doing this? Why can't I have a conversation with you right now in public comment? Why can't I talk about this teacher that I want to talk about? And what I've seen in that, on that spectrum, and my board chair right now does a really good job with that. And I'm not just giving him a plug because he's an attendee right now. Is that the, you know, that the people who do a good job can explain the whys to the public. Why are we not, why can't you do the thing you want to do right now? And, and when that is backed up by the, by that consistency, then their neighbor tells them, oh, no, it's fine. You're not, you're not getting slighted here. This is something they do all the time. Now, to answer your question, I mean, our experience, what we do is, is then you can contact the board chair or you contact me. Or you express in public comment, you say, this is something I'd like, I think the board should address. And then it is at the board chair's discretion about whether or not that gets on our future agenda. If there's an operational issue in the moment, you call the operational guy. And you find out what's going on around that. And if you don't like that answer, then you, then you have other ways to go. But I think you have to be really, you need to be very fluid about operationally what you need to do. And it can't be because that's what the V S B A said. It's going to be, here's the reason why that we're going to do that. And there is a route for you to get your, your questions answered. It just isn't right now at the beginning of this public, in this public comment section. And let me tell you why. Great. Thanks for your comment. We'll get, somebody will get back to you. I look forward to having a conversation.
Thank you. Got another one here. I think this might be for Commissioner Shurling. It's would a constable be a good alternative for the more rural villages and towns?
Yes, I think this one may have been partially answered a couple of minutes ago. Certainly, if you've got a, if you've got a constable that is a known entity who has the right skillset to do this kind of intervention, that would be, that would be a good choice.
Thank you very much. Any other questions that the audience has? I'm going to shift back to look at a few of mine in the meantime. So this one is for Elizabeth Burrows with your legislator hat on. Do you think that legislators are aware of some of these challenges and are they considering any Do you think that, uh, legislators are aware of some of these challenges and are they considering any solutions?
I, I think that legislators are acutely aware of some of these challenges. Right now, we've, we've been called back to the legislature on Monday, uh, as a result of some of this. Some of the, uh, I don't know if you want to call it dialogue, uh, that's been taking place about, uh, vaccinations and masking in schools because there's no consistent policy across the state. And, uh, we as board members have been contacted about it. We have led, as legislators have been contacted about it. I'm, I'm, I serve on the healthcare committee. And I get questions all the time about it and we'll go back to the legislature on Monday and try to, resolve that question somehow. But I think legislators are definitely aware of the kind of, raised pitch of, of all of these different things. There's also, regarding some of the, uh, curricular questions, um, that have come up. And I think, you know, people don't necessarily understand how curriculum is decided. Um, as we as school board members know, but the general public doesn't, doesn't necessarily understand how that's decided. So I think that's another problem. I have one quick question for Pietro. Would it be all right if I asked it?
Absolutely.
Um, Pietro, does this fall under allowable email exchange? Um, under open meeting law discussion of, uh, what we're going to do at the next meeting? Or does it have to be, does it have to take place in a public meeting?
Uh, so Elizabeth, let me make sure I understand. You mean, what, what is, what are our safety plans?
Yeah, because it's not necessarily board business, right?
Well, it, it is. I, I think the argument is appropriately that it's board business. But what I would suggest to you is that planning can happen in executive session. It's not really an action item. So you never have to vote on it. And, and you don't want the general public to be aware of what your safety plans are. And and it's the kind of thing where I, I can find one of the rules under, uh, executive session that this will fit under so that you can appropriately have those conversations presumably with people who are expert in security measures and develop a plan that works for the board. And I will say, so kudos to both Rory and to Commissioner Shurling. Um, you know, I, I'd never thought about that, that, that boards ought to have safety plans, just like kids in schools do. And I, I guess I'm like the frog where the water just gets warmer and war- warmer. And I don't really quite realize how out of hand things can get. But that video, Elizabeth, that I showed at the beginning, I, you know, my, my sense is that that's fairly routine in some communities at this point. And, and I thought, as I watched the video, that the board chair probably did as good a job as could be done under the circumstances, trying to just not respond, um, not engaging. The guy was done, get him out of here. And that's probably the way to do it. But, but what I hear from, uh, people like Mary uh, and others in, in mostly rural communities is that things are getting incredibly heated. And this concept that, that the commissioner and that the state's attorney, um, have suggested of having plans is really smart.
I agree. I agree. I just don't want to do it in open session.
Yeah, please, please don't. And you don't have to.
All right. Thank you for answering that question.
I think I have another one for you, Pietro. Um, this comment says, public comments to express opinion before every action item does having the packet available with the action items listed for the public before the meeting. And the opportunity for public comment time at the beginning and the end of the meeting, is that enough to comply with the requirement that you spoke about earlier?
Okay. So in all things open meeting, I defer to Sue, but, but I'm going to take a, I'm going to take a stab at it. And, and this is what I would say. Um, look, the, the, the philosophy, the, 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 the spirit of the open meeting law is that there's something magical about the way that you all talk about these issues during the course of the meeting. That there's a dynamic that exists that, that cannot be replicated on a piece of paper. And for that reason, my strong advice would be, no, uh, yeah, they, they may know what you're going to talk about, but they may not know the way you talked about it when you had that item, um, in front of you. You had an opportunity to debate it because that's what you're doing. Uh, oftentimes there's no debate, but at least, uh, in theory, there, there is under Robert's Rules of Order, some conversation, discussion about those items before they're voted on. And the idea would be that people get to respond to not only the documentary description of the issue, but also the way that you have responded to it and characterized it during the course of your conversations. And Sue, again, I defer to you in all things open meeting.
Well, thank you. We, we actually, um, don't necessarily, don't necessarily think that it needs to be after every action item. Um, because it can get to a point where the, the public sort of thinks that they're part of the board. So, um, yeah, I think, I think it's up to each board to kind of reach that balance that, um, that they want to reach with their public comment. Let's see, what have we got?
You know, one of the things and, and I, you know, like I, I, I do, I, I have great respect for V S B A and the great work they do. The challenge that they face, all of us face, is that there's so few cases that describe what, what the open meeting law means. And so we're left trying to read these tea leaves based on what we think is the spirit of the law. And, and e- every once in a while, um, you have to do things that are not entirely consistent because they're practical considerations. And maybe one day the Vermont Supreme Court will start issuing decisions that make it clearer to us exactly what the rules of the road are going to be. But until then, we have to strike this incredibly challenging balance between, um, trying to serve the spirit of the law a- and getting business done.
Well said. So another question, how is it best to handle board members who want to comment during public comment during a meeting? Who wants to answer that one?
I will just say that I've had the conversation with, with, uh, over, you know, over and over again, it's like that, don't take the bait. Don't take the bait. Um, and, you know, and it's, and it is so tempting. And I, and I would say even as a, as a higher, you know, as a hired guy in the room, um, you know, when someone says something completely wrong about your schools or disparages, um, something, you want to jump in. But as soon as you do that, you just broke the seal on the, we don't get into a dialogue during public comment. And so I know I've had with a couple of board chairs, had to have intensive conversation about like, you just can't do it. You gotta, you just gotta hold the line. Um, and, uh, that's worked out better with some chairs than others.
Thank you. I'm looking to see if I have any more questions. I think, I think that was the last question in the queue. And, oh, wait, I think one just came in. Uh, okay. I have, here's another one. I have experience with a few board members who use public comment as a means to bring issues to the board on behalf of other residents who can't come to the meeting. Thoughts?
Well, I'll jump in since it's my superintendent and, uh, I think we're probably guilty of this a little bit, uh, at the Cabbie School District and, you know, it's, it's one of those difficult things where because of open meeting laws, there's, it's sometimes important for board members to just get things out there. And sometimes it's a community member who's brought an issue to our attention. It may not fit in with an agenda, but it's something that ought to be in the collective consciousness, either of the administration or for the board to put on a future agenda item. And I think this is one area where even as an attorney, I find it to be really clumsy sometimes of how to navigate not violating open meeting law and yet still sharing or having some initial reaction to, um, to information. And, uh, I, I think it's probably not a good practice. And increasingly, it now stepping to a, a board chair role. I see most of the time this is, these issues are better handled by getting the information to somebody in the administration who can actually take action on it. Or let that be, uh, worked back into the superintendent's report. You know, a community member came to us with concerns about, you know, parking or the crosswalk or, you know, whatever is student safety, whatever the, you know, particular cases. And then allow that to come up for a discussion as part of an administration report, instead of it being just a on the fly of board members sent, stepping in as a member of the public. And I've also seen that as well, where sometimes a board member will decide to make a public comment, even though they're a board member, which is always, um, you know, a bit curious as well.
So, so Rory, um, thi- this is w- w- one of the things that I've observed, I, and I agree with everything you've said. Um, some boards believe it's their obligation to read letters and emails that they receive from members of the public into the record. They think that that is a service to their communities. And my experience is that, um, it's, it's very challenging because people use it as an opportunity to, um, excoriate, uh, individuals or things that they don't like about the district. And, and so there, there's this weird phenomenon where board members want to read the things that are good, um, from community members who haven't bothered to show up to the meeting. And then they, they are very reluctant to read the things that are bad. And we're back in that trap where we've created this rule that, um, really makes us read the bad things. And, and what I always tell boards is, look, um, you know, the open, open meeting laws, um, talk about showing up. There, there's no mechanism for people to, from the comfort of their own home, hit send and have you as a robot, uh, read whatever it is that they've sent you. Um, I, you know, that's not the open meeting law. That's something more that you may decide you want to do as a board. But I think the challenges of doing that are quite significant because then you're going to have to do it for everybody, not just, not just the people have good things to say.
So we're getting, thank you for that, Pietro. We're getting close to the end of our, um, webinar and I'm going to ask, um, my panel members if any of you have any closing remarks that you, something that I didn't ask or something that we didn't cover that you think is important for people to know. And while you're thinking about that for a minute, I'm going to ask, also ask Carrie Lamb, if Carrie, would you please post in the chat, the links to the materials for the PowerPoint and also the, um, suggested language for chairs that we developed? And we're going to, we're going to,
Yes, I'll do it right now.
Thank you. We're going to send those by email to everyone who registered for the webinar. We'll send you a recording of this webinar and also those materials. But Carrie's going to put, um, links in the chat right now. So you can also, um, get a look at that, at them now. Um, so with that, I'm wondering if any of, uh, my panelists have anything else they'd like to add?
I, I'd just like to thank you ever, ever so much for inviting me to be part of this panel. Sue. Um, it's been a really humbling experience for me. I've really learned a lot, um, in, in preparing for it. So thank you for this opportunity.
Well, I'd like to thank all of you for, for being here. It's, um, we really appreciate you spending the time, um, with us and all of your expertise with us. Um, we can't thank you enough for being here. And thanks to everyone else who's, who's been watching tonight. As I said, we're going to be back in touch with you with an email, with a recording of the webinar and also the materials. And we really hope to see all of you in person soon. And I also just wanted to convey best wishes from the V S B A for a very happy Thanksgiving for everyone next week. And with that, we'll end our webinar. Thanks, everyone.